On Finance Administration to Order. And thank you for coming. I'll take up the following items for approval. Item, Action Item 1A is the approval of the minutes from our April 24, 2023 meeting. I'll move approval of Item 1A. May I have a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion, any changes or amendments to the minutes? There are none? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stating the minutes are approved. Now let's address Action Item B, the policy calendar. Item 1B1 is a resolution to authorize the fiscal year 2024 university operating capital and capital budget allocations. This resolution requests the Board of Trustees to adopt the operating budget allocations by campus and program for the fiscal year 2024 of $4.29 billion. The resolution also requests the Board of Trustees adopt the capital budget allocation for projects authorized by the City University Construction Fund, CUCF, to address critical maintenance, infrastructure, and programmatic initiatives supporting the university's mission. The budgets reflected in the allocations are based on the fiscal year 2024 New York State enacted budget and New York City Executive Budget. I'll now ask University Executive Budget Director Catherine Abada for a presentation on this item.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. So I'll go through a presentation on the allocations and then I can, of course, take questions that folks may have. So our total operating budget for--
I can't hear.
You speak loud. I'll put the mic close. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. So our total operating budget for fiscal '24 is $4.29 billion. Those are the current year appropriations for fiscal '24 and also a reappropriation of a portion of the $40 million in one-time strategic funds that the state provided in fiscal '23 that will not be expended in fiscal '23. They will be expended in fiscal '24, and there will be a presentation later on that $40 million plan. As the Chair mentioned, the allocations for the senior colleges are based on the state enacted budget, and for the community colleges, they are based on the city executive budget. And when the city adopts a final budget, any adjustments that need to be made will be made. So the total budget is the $4.3 billion, $4.259, as you can see in that third column there, and that's $135 million increase over the fiscal '23 level. And in a few minutes, I'll talk about what some of those increases are. So this slide provides a depiction of the funding sources of our budget, and you can see they're broken down into three components: state support, city support, and tuition revenue. I will note that the state support item does include the TAP, financial aid that students use to pay their tuition, and in the student tuition scholarships and financial aid piece, the financial aid that's included there is mainly Pell. And you can see there's just slight changes from year to year. So this slide depicts the uses of the funds, how the funds are allocated, and, you know, these numbers are lined out in the allocation documents that you all have, and you can see the percentages that are going to the senior colleges, community colleges, the changes year over year in that centrally managed accounts. You see that 33% for fiscal '24. That's comprised of operating allocations that are managed centrally, fringe benefits, energy, and building rentals. So starting with the senior college allocations, the budget for the senior colleges, system administration and shared services units totals $3.1 billion, and there is an increase of $132.8 million over the fiscal 2023 level, and that is made up of additional operating funds. So the state provided $53 million in new operating support for the senior colleges. The $40 million of one-time strategic funding was baselineed as operational support for fiscal '24, so that's a total of $93 million in additional operating support. Also, our fringe benefit cost increases were funded, so $35.9 million was provided for that. And then there was also a one-time appropriation of $50 million for transformational initiatives at the senior and community colleges. And, you know, the purpose of those funds is to support innovation, workforce needs, student support, improve academic programs, modernize campuses, et cetera.
How much of that is baselineed?
The $93 million is baseline, the $35.9 is baseline, the $50 million is just one time.
Thank you.
And then the state also provided some additional program and college-specific funding. As you can see there, $750,000, excuse me, for the School of Labor and Urban Studies, $1 million for environmental job training at Medgar Evers, $750,000 for the Dubois Blanche Center at Medgar Evers, and $0.5 million for the Blackmail Initiative. In the allocation documents, you can see the distribution of the additional funding. So of the $93 million in new operational funding, $50 million was provided to the colleges, and it was distributed based on fall 2022 FTEs. $3 million of that funding was provided to the Graduate Center for doctoral student stipends. $1.5 million was provided to City College for the Dominican Studies Institute, and $1.5 million to Hunter College for the Center for Puerto Rican Studies. $37 million has yet to be allocated, and there are still discussions about the best way to use that money. Should it be just distributed similar to the way the $50 million was distributed? Do we want to target it to specific programs and initiatives? So those discussions are ongoing, and we will come back and share the proposed methodology for the funding, for the distribution of that $37 million, as well as for the $50 million in one-time funds.
So how will the increase in doctoral student stipends be allocated to the students?
So each of the graduate students receiving stipends will get an additional $2,000 upfront, and then additional funding will be provided for program-specific allocations to be given out by the specific programs at the Graduate Center.
Will any of this be allocated to students who don't currently have funding at the Graduate Center?
I don't know the answer to that question, but President Gurrell is here.
So I couldn't quite hear the question from the back. Could you please repeat?
So the question is about the $3 million that's being added to the Graduate Center doctoral student stipends. How much of that is going to go to students who are currently unfunded?
The funds will go to students who currently receive funding. This includes students who received, or continuing students and new students starting the fall, who received offers of five-year funding packages, and this will top them off by $2,000 a year. This particular funding will not be used for unfunded students, except that there is a piece of discretionary funding, so $500,000, that will go to programs, the academic programs, and they may choose to use some of those funds for students who may need funding for, you know, an additional semester to finish their dissertation, for some other kinds of unfunded situations. There is some funding that will go to students who do not currently have funding.
Thank you.
Yes, Trustee Cortez-Vasquez.
Gracias. Thank you. Can you provide some information on this $87 million, which I thought was $75 million, but my trustee--
I think--
The $75 million that's unallocated that you mentioned before, are we going to get a plan for that before we adopt the budget so that we could know where that will be--
Yeah, the $37 and the $50.
--submitted? I mean, where, how it will be allocated?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
It's sizable amount to be unallocated. Thank you.
Please proceed.
So the state enacted budget included some additional reporting requirements that we provide a plan to the Division of Budget for the use of the $93 million in operating support and the $50 million in one-time strategic funds. So those plans have to go to the state Division of Budget as well. And then, in addition, there is a requirement that the university develop a plan due January 1, 2024, how financial stability will be achieved going forward, taking into account all of the fluctuations in enrollment, how that will be addressed, you know, how program offerings and initiatives will be managed in order to continue to attract students and build enrollment. So moving over to the community colleges, the total budget for fiscal '24 is $1.2 billion. And in the city's executive budget, there was some additional funding provided, $4.8 million, which the university got this year for the CUNY Inclusive Economy, was baselineed. The university received $5.8 million for the CUNY Reconnect Initiative, which I think everybody is familiar with. That's an increase of $1.4 million over the fiscal '23 level. That is still one-time funding, I will point out. And there was also one, a third year of $1 million of one-time funding for the Brooklyn Recovery Corps at Medgar Evers College.
Trustee Berger and then Mr. Hannon. And then Trustee Cortez-Vasquez.
The budget reduction from the city of $61.5 million, is that just across the board? Every college, no matter what their budget is, it's not what it is? It's $61.5 million less?
So in the allocations, we distributed $20 million to the community colleges, prorated based on their current budgets. The other amounts are absorbed by reductions to academic programs, and yes, that means less money will be going to the colleges for academic programs. And then there are also fringe benefit savings, which are built into the city, into the city's PEG program.
And how do the colleges deal with what's, I mean, a significant reduction? I mean, are they actually cutting programs, cutting staff, cutting faculty?
So, yes, so the colleges all have savings plans that they have submitted. So those savings plans were 2% in fiscal '23. They grow to 5.5% to 7% in fiscal '24, and they include a combination of things. So plans to grow enrollment, plans to enhance tuition collections through ensuring that students are aware of the financial aid that they're eligible for, making sure they apply for financial aid. And then, yes, colleges are also making reductions to full-time and part-time staff, consolidating positions where they can, finding efficiencies, and then also looking to eliminate one-time OTPS purchases that can be eliminated. The $53 million in new faculty funding that colleges received in the current year will help reduce adjunct costs by bringing on new full-time faculty and being able to reduce adjunct needs.
So we get new faculty, and then we have to, but so, are we cutting fat? Are we cutting muscle, or are we cutting bone with $61.5 million? I mean, that's a lot of money from where I come--
It's a significant, yes, it is a significant amount of money, and colleges, you know, we see it in things colleges have had to already do this year. So there have been cuts in areas such as academic advisement, counseling, and so forth. So they are real cuts.
Mr. Hannon, then Trustee Cortez-Vasquez, then Professor Benton, I believe?
So two questions about this. First of all, the $9.1 that wasn't funded to the ACE program, does that mean the ACE program is going to be discontinued based on the fact that it wasn't funded?
Um, we're--
We're lobbying.
Yeah, would you say--
I mean, we're lobbying to try to, you know, to try to get it back, but right now it's unfunded.
I hope we can get it back. And the other one is, if we have $61.5 million reduction from the city's executive budget, doesn't that counteract half of what we gained from the state budget because we only gained $120 million from the state?
It does.
Okay, not a good situation.
It's not.
Trustee Cortez-Vasquez.
I need to reconcile this page with, I think, your third slide, where you show the entire budget for both state and city. And can you go back to that slide? Because, no, I think it's one behind that. Where you had the chart.
The charts, yep. The uses or the sources?
Go back, go back. It's one more, I think.
One more, yeah, the table.
Oh, the table, sorry.
What, I don't, I can't reconcile that with this page, because in this one, you say the percent change is 1%, and I don't see, I don't see the reduction. So I, it's, I, can you explain that to me?
Yeah, so this is a total, so this is the combination of the 3.1 and the 1.2. So in city support, the city does provide funding for collective bargaining increases, other mandatory cost increases. So the numbers in total do go up, but within that, there is savings of $61.5 million. So, you know, any additional funding we get for fringes, building rentals, for example, energy, have to fund those specific costs, while the $61 million in cuts have to be made in other operational areas.
Is the 617 net of the $61 million cut?
It's a portion of it. It's, it's, there's 39.1 million in fiscal '23, and then that grows to 61.5 in fiscal '24.
Yeah, so the 3.2 is a net number, right? So we get more money for collective bargaining, building rentals, whatever, and then it goes, we get the PEG, right? And the net increase is a 3.2.
Okay.
All right. So I would just say that you need to reconcile those two pages because it does, it's incongruent. You know, it's like, it just doesn't make sense.
Professor Benton?
The campuses in the winter, in the winter, developed savings plans.
Yes.
All the campuses, and they were very aggressive and painful plans, and my understanding is that the plans were reviewed, but none have been accepted or, because you were waiting for the budget to come out. And so I guess sometime between soon and when the January report comes out that says, here's how we're gonna land the plane, are we gonna see which of those, how those plans are adopted? And also, is this committee going to see a, some kind of a summation of what all that, of the, of the cut plans that each of the campuses is doing?
The plans are actually, the summary of the plans was part of the materials that was provided. So within materials, one of the attachments was a summary of all the savings plans by college, that, in the material thing for this board meeting.
Okay. Do you know what, but some point, tell me which page.
Oh, yeah. It was a separate document, but, and then, we did approve--
We did approve--
Including John Jay, a lot of the plans.
We have approved a lot of the plans.
A lot of them.
Yeah.
Some of them still not approved because we still need some additional information from those colleges. One other, the city allocation also includes a $25 million one-third reduction in ASAP. Is that correct? It goes from $75 million currently to $50 million in the, in the executive budget?
Yeah, it's, it's not quite that high because some of, some of those funds are already at the colleges, but it's, yes, that reduction in ASAP is a $13 million savings is incorporated in the allocation.
Which means fewer students will be, will be covered.
Please proceed with your presentation.
So looking towards the future, so, you know, we've talked about the structural deficits of the colleges. At the last meeting, we reviewed the third quarter financial report, and at that time there was $117 million structural deficit. You know, on the positive side, that number did come down significantly from what we were looking at, at year-end fiscal '22. And as we just discussed, one of the ways that that is being addressed is through these college savings plans. And then, in addition, the major focus of the $40 million in one-time strategic funds was on building enrollment, and so generating additional revenue to grow that back and help eliminate those structural deficits. Just a few items are mentioned there, new marketing campaigns, just adjustments to the, the application process, the admissions process to make that simpler, making it easier for New York City public school graduates to get admitted to a CUNY college, and then also the, excuse me, the CUNY Reconnect program is helping to bring students back. And then--
So CUNY Reconnect will continue funding?
Yes, $5.8 million was provided, yep.
Good, good. Please hold on to that. Okay. Are you done with this point?
I was just gonna mention one thing about the individual college assessments. Okay, so, so after we issue the allocation, the next step is for colleges to submit financial plans. And, you know, we've been talking about the structural deficits as just overall numbers, but, you know, we're really gonna, you know, continue our focus on individual colleges and assessments, because colleges are in different places. You know, there have been different enrollment changes at the colleges. Some have been impacted, you know, especially by the pandemic, more than others, and so we will be taking deeper dives into the colleges, working with them to help them address their structural deficits, understand what they are working on on campuses, and work together to come up with any additional strategies that will be needed.
You have a question, Mr. Hannon?
Yes, I'm looking at this and still trying to reconcile it with what was being said earlier about the discrepancy with regard to the city support, and part of that discrepancy was said about the collective bargaining agreements. But right now, we don't have a contract, so what collective bargaining are we referring to if there is no contract agreement with the PSC for contract increases?
So it's the last contract, there's still an incremental cost increase that will be effective in fiscal '24 for the last PSC increase.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the presentation?
So the capital budget allocations, so the, the state budget provided $4.6 billion in total for the, for the capital budget. That's an increase of $1.1 billion over the current level. You can see the breakdown here, $919 million of that is for the senior colleges. The community colleges receive $120 million in funds to match what the city has funded. And then there's an appropriation for administrative costs for all of the capital projects. The city has provided a 10-year plan of $1.7 billion, and the amount for fiscal '24 is $135 million. And on this slide, there's a breakdown of the appropriation, how the funding will be used, so $384 million for capital infrastructure. That includes things like boiler replacements, upgrades, roof renovations, fire alarm upgrades, elevator, escalator replacements, or again, upgrades. And you can see the breakout here by college-specific items, CUNY-wide projects that kind of have to happen across all of the colleges, and then expansion and improvements total, $535 million. And there are details within the allocation documents that you've received that show allocations by college and by, you know, specific functional item type. And then the $135 million in city funding, you can see the source there, broken down by mayoral, borough presidents and city council. Each of those entities provides specific, excuse me, specific amounts for capital projects.
And that's broken out later on?
Can we finish with this question?
We're finished with the presentation. Trustee Cortez-Vasquez and then Trustee Berger.
Can we go back to the presentation, to the pie chart where you had the distribution between CUNY Central, senior colleges, and, and community colleges? I think it's, it's one of your earliest slides, maybe your fifth slide.
Sorry, it's slow, sorry.
Okay.
We like seeing the pretty colors.
Move to the next one.
This is the next one, yeah.
She's, she's gonna find it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Is it possible to give us a few years of this pie chart? Because it'll be interesting to see where the growth and where the, where the retrenchment has been.
Yes.
Right? It's, it's very difficult to, to see the community colleges getting such a, a small share of the funding while we see other, other areas seems to have expansion. So I would appreciate that before we get to the budget adoption, right?
Now, you're talking about. Can you provide that?
I don't have it now, right now? Sorry.
Yeah, that's what the trustee was asking.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I can't provide that right now.
All right, so then, could you, are we supposed to adopt budget today? No?
We're supposed to--
Yeah. Recommend.
Approve this item today.
Is that these allocations?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. That informs me.
Trustee Berger.
Going back to the operating budget, there's one line I don't fully understand. On the college-by-college allocations, there's tax levy allocations and then non-tax levy allocations. What are the sources of the non-tax, the non-tax levy allocations? Are those tuition or?
So I, I think, depending on the chart, is it within the--
It's like on page four and on page, the numbers are so small. On page four of the fiscal '24 initial budget allocations, senior colleges.
So do you mean--
It has each college, and then there are a bunch of lines that add up to the, the initial tax levy allocation, and, and then there's a column for non-tax levy allocations, projected allocations--
Outside of the operating budget. Yeah, so, so those are tax levy, those are the fringe benefits, building rentals and energy. Those don't get allocated--
Okay.
--to the colleges, but they get spent on behalf of the colleges.
And one other question, on page seven of that series of charts, you have fiscal '24 system office initial allocation, and there are some increases, decrease, academic affairs gets, gets decreased by 11.2%, but the Office of Chancellor gets increased by 38%? What's the, what is that?
Yeah, so, so what we did is we, we looked at fiscal '23 expenses and built the allocations off of that, and so these are based on, on actual uses of the funds. In the chancellor's office, what is new here is the Office of Transformation that was created. We have a, excuse me, a chief transformation officer. So there's additional funding here in that budget to support those operations.
And that's coming under the chancellor's office line?
Yes.
Coming out of those funds.
And it takes $38 million to fund that operation?
No.
I think that's the question.
It was 38%.
38%.
38%.
Yeah.
It's only half, it's only half a million dollars, but it was just, you know, such a big jump.
Yeah. But if you look at this chart, the jump is more significant, and that, that's what I can't understand either.
Professor, Professor Benton, she needs to answer.
Please do.
Oh, I'm sorry, can I just ask a question? Are you looking at the yellow part of the pie? Is that what your concern is?
No, that's where my question is. My question is explanation for-- My question is explanation for the, for something called centrally managed accounts.
Well, those are fringe benefits. Those are, so those are different things that we manage centrally, like fringe benefits, utilities, rentals, and those type of things. So, as Kathy explained before, those are incurred by the colleges, but we manage them centrally, those amounts. And they're, they're big amounts because, mostly because of those fringe benefits. The central office, I think, is, is that the gray, Kathy? The central office piece is the gray, the gray part of the, of the pie.
I think Mr. Hennin had his, and then Mr., Professor Benton.
I was gonna ask the same question as trustee Berger, so I withdraw.
Very good. Professor Benton?
First of all, thank you, I did find, and that's an amazing chart. The question is, I mean, that's really, if you want to see where the blood on the floor is, that's it. But the question is, do the allocations on page, the same chart you were talking about, but there's a senior college and a community college allocations, do those reflect the savings? Or do those, are those in advance of the savings? Or some, how do I, which, which of the savings is assumed in the allocations and which of the savings are yet to come?
So, for the senior colleges, the budgets aren't being reduced, but colleges have to actually reduce costs because their funding isn't high enough to cover their current level of cost, right? That's why they have the structural deficits, which up to this point, colleges have had the stimulus funds to cover. But those stimulus funds are going away, so costs have to go down or else other revenue has to be brought in to replace them. It's a little different on the community college side because we do have the cuts from the city. So, $20 million of the community college savings plans will have to cover the city budget reductions.
Are those reflected on, on the chart on page six?
Table, yes. It's page six.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, this is, to be clear, the roadmap for the fiscal year to begin July 1. What you hear is not the sound of drums, but probably, probably thunder. Let me then, if everyone has, is satisfied with respect to the information that they are seeking, and if there is no further discussion, I'll, I have moved this. May I have a second? Trustee Berger?
One more nuisance. Sometime between now and June 30th, presumably the city will adopt the actual budget, not the executive budget. That may happen before our last meeting. Will there be revisions in that time? And if not, how will we be plugged in at or prior to July 1 to deal with what we hope are some significant increases in the city funding?
They're, yes, I mean, we can, yeah.
Yes, if there's big revisions, we will, we'll reflect that, absolutely. Bring it to the board.
And I think what trustee Berger is asking is, you'll reflect that, but how do the trustees then weigh in on that?
They'll have to come back to the board if there are big changes.
They'll have to come back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, can they come directly to the board on June 26th? If, if it's done by then, and would we be able to consider it, or?
Conceivably, but I do not know. And I don't think anyone does. Because we don't, I mean, we're talking about bigger than 5%. You know, all of those issues would have some bearing on this conversation. They've already indicated that they will take this up with the board again if there are significant material changes.
Yes.
And then, you know, we could have a, you know, that's why they made executive committees. You know?
Thank you.
Okay? Now, where were we?
In the middle of voting.
I think you were ready to vote.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
One.
Two.
Two abstentions. 1B1 is approved. Item 1B2 is a resolution to approve the university's fiscal year 2025 preliminary...
Point of order, according to a Perez majority, how many votes is a majority?
It's a majority of the quorum, so you have Sandra is votes, so you have Carrie.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. As I was saying, this is a resolution to approve the university's fiscal year 2025 preliminary budget request. Okay? I, I see a lot of furrowed browns. I have a few of those myself. Look, I think it's fair to say, and I've discussed this with everybody, we haven't drawn down a nickel yet on 2025 funding or resolved any of those issues. So, one, this is at best premature, but two, provokes a lot of other side debate that we probably would consider counterproductive right now. In any case, I will move to table this. And for those reasons, may I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? There is none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B2 is tabled. By the way, I should say that the, that the objective here was to try to get the university in a position to start advocating for funding a little earlier. I could not agree more. And I don't think anyone on this committee or on the board would dispute that. Only that this is a bit premature.
And one doesn't preclude the other.
In fact, anybody representing the board and the chancellor can go to the legislature, city or state, anytime, and ask for more funds. That's been done in the past, that's okay. I don't think anybody will get fired for that. But, but I think as a matter of policy, we're not there yet. Okay? So, 1B2 is tabled. 1B3 is a resolution to authorize a campus network modernization project. We on the technology subcommittee heard a very good presentation on this that makes an enormous amount of sense. Seek to modernize the networks of 16 campuses and the central office by replacing equipment that's end-of-life. And investing in this modernization will improve the university's resiliency, reduce importantly cybersecurity risk, and enable centralized campus network visibility. University seeking approval from the board to authorize the City University of New York acquisition of network equipment bundled software licenses with support and implementation services through the dormitory authority of the state of New York in an amount not to exceed $36 million, 300,000, $36 million, 300,000, excuse me, or $36.3 million under the terms of the Cisco OGS contract using existing allocated capital funds. Vice Chancellor for Information Technology, Seb Formosa, is available to answer any questions you may have. But since there's a tremendous amount of congruence between this committee and the technology subcommittee, does any, if anyone has a question, ask it now. Mr. Henn?
Because that was in the technology subcommittee, I wasn't at the presentation for this item. So, could we have at least a synopsis of what we're approving here with regard to what kind of infrastructure upgrades there are?
What kind of what?
Infrastructure upgrades there are with this campus modernization project.
Seb, you wanna do that quickly?
So, we're looking to upgrade the switches, the network switches in approximately 16 campuses. The campuses that we are upgrading, the switches on, have all worked with us to identify end-of-life or about-to-be-end-of-life hardware. The campuses that are not, right, the question always is, why, why we're not doing something? Because they are not in need of any devices at this point because they don't have any, any of the tools. As part of the update on the hardware, we are also going to redesign the local networks so that we have better resiliency and better consistency across the campus networks, which will make the overall network easier to manage.
Thank you.
If there's nothing else, I'll move approval of item 1B3. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
All right, we have a lot of seconds here. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? 1B3 is approved, thank you. Item 1B4 is a resolution to engage consulting services, and consulting resources to enhance admissions, enrollment, and financial aid systems. University issued a request for quotes on March 8th pursuant to a GSA contract to which 22 vendors responded and were evaluated by a committee comprised of central office personnel. And the evaluation committee selected seven vendors based on the qualifications, technical skills, availability of the developers and programmers that the vendors can make to the university. University seeking approval from the board to authorize I&amp;I Software, Intermedia Group Incorporated, Optima Global Solutions, Raj Technologies Incorporated, SVAM International, LTech Federal, and Unique Comp Incorporated to provide software developers and programmers and to make expenditures and purchases under the contracts not to exceed $4.2 million in non-recurring strategic funds received in the 2023 New York State enacted budget for services to be completed by June 30, 2024. Executive Vice Chancellor and Provost Wendy Hensel is available to answer any questions if you may have them.
She's not stuck.
Oh, she's not? There you go. You don't have any anyway, so, oh, I'm sorry.
In, in general, is there some document that might be provided to us later that describes what exactly the general outline of initiatives are? What, what the different things are that are gonna be done?
Yeah.
We, we could get you that.
I mean, it just would be useful to understand it.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not trying to stand in the way of it.
Consider it requested, and they have a, there's a commitment to get it to you.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else?
There's a question.
Yes, that's a call.
At the, the explanation, the last sentence notes that five of the seven vendors selected are New York State MWBE certified, which is great. I'm just wondering, was there any consultation with our subcommittee on diversity, inclusion, and MBWE on this, on this initiative?
With the subcommittee? Sandy?
Yeah. What we have is a goal and guidance that all procurement on behalf of the city unit or city of New York meets New York State's MWBE and SDVOB goals and requirements.
So, but that's, my, but my question was, and that's, that's great. I'm just wondering, I just want to know if there was any, we have a, a subcommittee on diversity, inclusion, and MBWE. Was there any consultation on this with that?
I'll review it once again, but what happens? Any resolution that comes before and is required to come before any of the committees are required to have a MWBE goal and an SDVOB goal. In this particular case, we will, once again, review it with our chair and make sure and get back to you as to the goals that are provided specifically for this resolution.
Okay, I don't know if I need goal, I just wanted to know if there was consultation with our subcommittee on this.
Okay. What I'm saying is, I want to confirm that for you, and we'll get back to you.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Wilkin. Provost Hensel, question was answered in your absence. You've been informed, and I think of it.
I haven't heard the actual question. I know we're talking about which resolution we're speaking about.
Professor Benton's question?
Well, my question was whether there was some document that summarizes the substance of what is to be accomplished. You know, this is saying who's gonna do it, but it doesn't say what's gonna do it. Now, I don't need it in order to vote for this, but I would be interested in knowing what we're buying with this, what we're accomplishing with our enrollment management.
Yes, I have created that document. I'm happy to share that with you. I can give you a quick rundown. It is, it will allow us to do the fast application with the Department of Education that we've identified as a priority here. It allows us to do an instantaneous welcome letter to the high school seniors that we've been talking about with the QR codes. All of these things are complex with our current systems and cannot be done without additional expertise. It allows a net price financial aid calculator, which will, at the moment, we are losing significant enrollment because we are so slow in being able to identify the comparable costs of other colleges and the actual price of attendance. It allows and creates a counselor corner with the Department of Education High School Guidance Counselors so that they can see directly into what the admission status is of a student and in real time, and guide them through that, something we don't currently have. It simplifies the FAFSA as part of a, and this one is more complex, I'll just say it simplifies our FAFSA process, can give you more detail. It, that verifies the Excelsior Scholarship in a way that's automatic that currently is not possible. So, again, a significant increase in speed for us to communicate with our enrollees. It allows us to do, believe it or not, automated grade changes and things that at the, at the current moment delay significant grade reporting that impacts financial aid in ways that are highly problematic. So, that is something also doing.
So, importantly, those...
I can, I mean, literally, there's, there are many. So, if, if you look at the strategic planning that we talked about, about improving and simplifying and significantly aiding the automation of our admissions and retention processes, these things are instrumental to these, these upgrades.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else on this? I'll move 1B4, may I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? 1B4 is approved. Thank you. Policy item 1B5 is a resolution to authorize a contract with United Neighborhood Houses of New York to develop First Impressions Youth Justice Initiative at the CUNY School of Law. School of Law received a $1 million New York State grant to establish First Impressions Youth Legal Collaborative Institute, first of its kind program administered by CUNY Law to provide CUNY's most marginalized middle school and high school youth with a community-based program focused on creating a positive impression of the justice system. CUNY Law is receiving $1 million each year for three years and anticipates paying $500,000 to United Neighborhood House each year for three years to develop and implement a community-based program for middle school and high school students for a three-year term at a cost not to exceed $1.5 million. CUNY School of Law Associate Dean of Finance and Administration, Carolyn Geiselman, Associate Dean for Enrollment Management, Access Initiatives, Degna Levisser are available to provide any further background on this, should you require. Anyone?
I would like more information as to how is that integrated with DYCP or some of the other human youth development programs?
Would anyone from CUNY Law like to take a whack at that?
We weren't able to hear your question, Mr. Chairman.
My question is, I would love to see the, get more information on the program plan and how will UNH involve some of the DYCP youth programs and integrate that into the other programming that they do?
UNH's function in this program, because they, this is, the money was given to CUNY Law School, not sought, but given to CUNY Law School to develop this program with a real focus on reaching younger children. And so we were looking to partner with an organization that had infrastructure in place already dealing with middle school students and high school students in their communities because that was the foundational idea behind the program that the Senator proposed for this program. So they're ready to go because they already have that infrastructure. So one was expediting it. The other is this was supposed to function, is supposed to function as a pilot for New York State. And UNH in particular has reached beyond New York City. They have locations and settlement houses, community-based organizations throughout New York State. So the idea was to use the city as a pilot infrastructure to roll it out across the state. The other parts of the program, so that's one prong of the program. The other parts of the program are a summer program for youth in New York City tied to New York City Public Schools to, that law students will teach college students in the CUNY, across the CUNY system about youth empowerment and justice and their own personal agency as young members of our communities. And the other prong of the program is to work through R K through sixteen initiatives to develop College Now programs with existing partnerships with CUNY colleges that already have links to high schools, so the three parts. But UNH specifically was the community-based piece because they already have access to the kids. And this is in collaboration, I should say, with the Office of Court Administration. So they are working to be central part of the mentorship piece. Every child in the program will have a mentor who is part of the Office of Court Administration structure, staff, judges, lawyers.
Do you know if UNH is going to subcontract this money with the existing settlement houses?
Yes, they're, the settlement houses are independent 501(c)(3)'s, and so UNH is serving as the clearinghouse. If this is approved, they will send out a request for applications, and then interested settlement houses will apply.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on 1B5? Hearing nothing, I'll move its approval. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, item 1B5 is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 1B6 is a resolution to authorize contract extension with Blackboard to ensure ongoing access to learning management system and during phase transition to a new learning management system platform. University's Board of Trustees authorized in March 2021 a contract renewal extension with Blackboard from December 22 to December 2023 to ensure ongoing access to Blackboard's learning management system and enable completion of requests for proposals. The university awarded the contract pursuant to the RFP to a new LMS, which the Board of Trustees approved on August 23, 2022. Planned transition from Blackboard to the new vendor will be phased over two years with four groups of campuses transitioning over four sequential semesters, all 2023 through spring 2025. The transition schedule includes time to establish appropriate governance and technical teams and provide training to faculty, staff, and students for successful teaching and learning in the new LMS. University seeking approval to extend the term, this is the important part of this resolution, extend the term of the existing Blackboard contract from 12/19/2023 to 12/18/2024 for a not-to-exceed amount of $2,876,536,000 with an option to further extend the contract from 12/19/24 to 12/18/2025, and also to amend the contract to add analytics for the period of 7/1/2023 to 12/18/2024 for a not-to-exceed amount of $230,947,000 with an option to extend the amendment from 12/18/2024 to 12/18/2025. Associate Vice Chancellor for Academic Strategy and Operations Kim Siegenthaler is available to discuss further background on this item or answer any questions should you may have them. In the meantime, I'll move approval of item 1B6. Are there any questions? Mr. Hennig?
So with the option for renewal from December 2024 to December 2025, part of the transition plan for Blackboard to Brightspace states that transition group four will still be migrating its courses over to Brightspace in spring 2025, which means under the current plan there will still be a group that will be migrating its courses in the spring 2025 semester. But further than that, all courses will be migrated over to Brightspace to be delivered strictly in Brightspace from summer 2025 onward. So that would mean if we would have this contract renewal for that group four, we would be renewing it for an entire year, whereas for the majority of that year, it wouldn't be administered in Blackboard at all because our courses will cease being in Blackboard as of May 2024 entirely. But we do still have in that plan that there will be courses administered in Blackboard in the spring 2024 semester, sorry, spring 2025 semester while that group is going to be migrating their courses over to Blackboard, transition group number four. So would we be paying for that entire year of renewal if we would only be using it for just about half of that year?
Jonathan, I love your optimism.
Well, I think I could answer that, but maybe?
And that comes from a guy of my vintage.
It's an option to extend, so it depends on where we are in the transition, whether we will need to have that additional time period. And the amount that we pay depends on how long we need it.
Okay, are we good with this? We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Trustee Berger, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, item 1B6 is approved. Thank you. 1B7 is a resolution to authorize the university to spend up to $1,379,273,000 with Google LLC effective for the term July 1, 2023 through November 30, 2023 to place digital advertisements to support broadly our efforts to increase enrollment and get the word out. University seeking approval to make expenditures and purchases not to exceed $1,379,273,000 effective for the term July 1, 2023 through November 30, 2023, through one or more purchases through the university's Office of Procurement and subject to the review and approval of the Office of Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel. Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing, Matej Hunto, Kunko, is available to provide further background should you require it. Before I move approval of item 1B7, I'd like to turn to Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and our General Counsel, who has indicated that he'd like to propose amendments to this resolution for our consideration to best reflect the type of procurement the university is entering into with Google LLC, and I'll ask the Secretary to pass out the amended language. And this is essentially because we, this is the only way we can do this. We do not have a requirements contract with Google or our next item, so if we want to get this done, this is the only way.
I was about to ask if we could merge the two items.
What's that?
I was about to ask if we could merge the two items into one.
Let's not. Let's not confuse the issue, let's do them separately. But good thought.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the Chair did my job for me. He read the explanation that's contained in the whereas and resolved. The original resolution that was calendered suggested that there was a contract. For those of us who are not as up-to-date in the digital age, these purchases are not made by contracts, they're made digitally through the internet. And as a stickler for our university in presenting an accurate resolution to the Board of Trustees, we wanted to make sure you understood that the General Counsel wasn't signing a contract, but they would be procured through a process approved by New York State Law and through the Office of Procurement. We'll obviously have to review the terms and conditions through the digital click-through, but they would not be a formal contract that would be received by the Office of General Counsel for signing. So we wanted to make sure that the appropriate resolution was before you to authorize the university to move forward. So that's why you have this revised resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, General Counsel. Are there any questions? Then I'd like to move item 1B7 as amended in accordance with the changes we've discussed. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, item 1B7 as amended is approved. Item 1B8 is a similar resolution to authorize the university to spend up to $1,178,000 with Meta and its related entities, Facebook and Instagram, effective for the term July 1, 2023 through November 30, 2023 to place digital advertisements. This is more of the same. I believe you will get the proposed amendments and how we will present this for approval once everyone's got them.
Right.
Would the, would our General Counsel wish to add anything to this?
It's the very same, similar as the Chair, thank you, Mr. Chairman, resolution, again, because these are digital companies, they live in a different universe than our, the old-fashioned way we used to do things. Meta, as you know, is the, is otherwise known as Facebook, and these are the way we communicate these days, and in fact, it's a different way of purchasing digital ads. So we'll work very closely with our Senior Vice Chancellor for Communications in our office to make sure that we can facilitate purchasing these digital advertisements.
Mr. Hennig?
If we're going to have to be pedantic on this in order for it to be a contract, I'd like to point out that in the first.
No one requires anyone to be pedantic here.
It says 256 constituents to Ulls and Colleges.
That was a typo.
And so that needs to be, so 25.
No, that's called being exact.
Okay.
Let's change that and we'll just offer that as a friendly amendment. Professor Benton?
I want to ask a more substantive question. I know we've been, and we're just one college, but at John Jay, we've been looking at the various places that we engage with students, and we're sort of stepping back from Meta because our metrics about it weren't very good. And our, anyway, are we sure we want to do this?
I'll defer to Matej Hunko, who's our Vice Chancellor for Communications, who can speak to the impressions that both are received at Meta and Facebook and Google.
Good evening, everyone. I'll just say that this year in fiscal '23, our digital advertisement brought us 106,000 clicks to our, the start of the CUNY application. Of that, around 60,000 came from Google and 31,000 came from Facebook and Instagram, being sort of the second most successful of the digital platforms, followed by Snapchat. So while there is, you know, other platforms and we're in different platforms, we continue to see very, you know, tremendous trend in Google and on Facebook, Instagram. And another area of growth where we sort of started to expand these years on YouTube, which is of course a Google product, well, we have seen there 1.8 million views so far this year in our videos and our enrollment videos, the promotion of our university and to prospective students. Where the good thing is that this digital ad allows us to track constantly, you know, is that working, should we change it, is it working, you know, constantly to really adjust in real time because of our goal is of course to lower cost of our ads and increase the return on that investment. And we have seen a lot of good news this year on this space on Google, just as an example, we increased the budget for about 150%. We saw an increase in the startup by 400%, and we reduced the cost of those clicks from $14 to $7. So we're really tracking it to the point, I'm, yeah, I don't want to, I can go on and on in details, but this is one of the good things about digital ads.
That's good. Any questions on this? Then I'll move this item as amended, and I should further clarify these amendments that I'm offering, as I did with the previous one, but I'll move item 1B8 as amended. May I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Berger, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Mr. Hennig and Professor Benton abstain. These, item 1B8 as amended is approved. Thank you. Item 1B9 is a resolution to authorize a contract renewal with Navitas New York LLC to provide the International Student Success Program at Queens College. The university on behalf of Queens College entered into a contract with Navitas for the purpose of developing an international student success program. The term of the contract is from January 22, 2019 to January 21, 2024 with an option to renew one additional five-year term. Contract with Navitas has more than quadrupled the number of international students enrolled at the college from the 2020 to 2021 academic year to the 2022, 2023 academic year for a total of 163 additional international students by 2023. International students currently enrolled at ISSP are expected to pay a total of $10,600,000 in tuition in the years following their completion of the program. The university is seeking approval to renew the contract with Navitas for a not-to-exceed amount of $8 million annually for a period of five years ending on January 21, 2029. How's that for optimism? With a total not-to-exceed amount for the renewal period of $40 million, Queens College President Frank Wu is available to answer any questions if you have any. If you, Mr. Hennig?
Is this program available to undocumented students and across the university? Do we have any plans for analogous programs at the other colleges?
Those are two separate questions. Is this program available to undocumented, to students who are undocumented? And I presume the answer is?
We do support undocumented students at Queens College, as the City University of New York does. This specific program would not be legally available to undocumented persons because you have to issue a visa, an F visa, and so. And so we could not legally participate in the recruitment of students. That would be sanctionable behavior. So this specific program is not. However, we do offer the full array of our services to those who are undocumented, except if otherwise prohibited by law. Should I proceed to the second question?
Please.
We are in discussion and we would be thrilled to expand this program of the other CUNY campuses that have an interest. We have had some preliminary conversations about how we might implement a hub-and-spoke model. That is not, however, part of the current proposal. If the Board wished for us to pursue that further, we, of course, would be eager to do that. It just depends on finding willing partners from among our peer institutions.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Hearing no other question, then I'd like to move approval of policy item. I'm sorry. Oh, forgive me. Trustee Wilkie, you're okay? I move approval of Item 1B9. And may I have a second?
Second.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B9 is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Wu. Item 1B10 is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. That report contains the non-faculty employee actions. The university appointments go through a thorough assessment and approval process prior to committee review, which may include personnel and budget committee recommendations, presidential approval, university budget office clearance and/or compensation analysis by university human resources. The report contains a total of, this Personnel Matters Report reflects selected ECP actions that have been entered, entered by the colleges into the CUNY system of record between March 22nd, 27th, 2023 and May 5th, 2023. The report contains a total of 28 ECP actions, including seven interim appointments, 11 regular appointments, three salary increases, and seven resignations. Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources, Dorian Gloria, is available to answer any questions on this, should you require. If there's nothing, then I'll move approval of Item 1B10. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Thank you. 1B10 is approved. 1B11 is a resolution to appoint Daniel Ambrose as Vice President for Enrollment Management and Student Affairs at Stella and Charles Gutman Community College. Suffice it to say, he is eminently qualified. And the Director of Human Resources at Gutman is here to provide further background on this, should you require it. In any case, I will move approval of Item 1B11. Is there a second?
A second.
Anything to be said on it? Hearing nothing? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. 1B11 is approved. 1B12 is a resolution to appoint David C. Balwata as Professional School Senior Associate Dean of Academic Affairs and Chief Academic Officer at the CUNY School of Law. He's had 10 years of progressive experience, administrative experience and leadership experience. And the Dean of the Law School is available to provide further background on this, should you require it. If not, I'll move approval of Item 1B12. May I have a second?
Second.
If there's nothing else, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B12 is approved. I'm sorry?
No, I'm just letting Gail know it's one abstention.
Thank you. Item 1B13 is a resolution to appoint Phyllis Curtis Tweed as Provost and Vice President of Academic Affairs at Queensborough Community College. Dr. Curtis Tweed currently serves as Vice President of Academic and Student Affairs at Bermuda College, which should lead the college's Strategic Planning and Implementation Initiative and collaborated with college task forces to improve campus culture and develop a shared governance model. Queensborough Community College President, Dr. Christine Mangino, is available to answer further background questions on this. In the meantime, I will approve. I will move approval of Item 1B13. May I have a second? Are there any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B13 is approved. Thank you. Item 1B14 is a resolution to appoint Teresa McGovern as Professional School Senior Associate Dean for Academic and Student Affairs at CUNY Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy. She joins the City, she joins the City University from Columbia University Mailman School of Public Health, where she was a professor and Chair of the Hyatt Brun Department of Population and Family Health and Director of the Program on Global Health, Justice and Governance. The Dean of the, of the school, Dr. Aiman Elmojandis, is here to provide further background, should you require it. Are there any questions on this? Hearing none, I'll move approval of Item 1B14. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B14 is approved. Thank you. 1B15 is a resolution to appoint Roblyn Meeks as Professional School Senior Associate Dean for Academic Affairs at Macaulay Honors College. Extensive background in educational leadership in a number of colleges, including some at City University. Chris Dennis, the Associate Dean of Finance Administration at Macaulay Honors College, is available to answer any questions, should you have them. In the meantime, I'll move approval of Item 1B15. Are there any questions? May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B15 is approved. Thank you. Item 1B16 points as a resolution to appoint Nancy Sanchez as Vice President of Institutional Advancement at Kingsborough Community College. Extensive experience in private as well as public educational leadership positions. President of the college is here, Dr. Schrader, to provide further background on this item, should you require it. In the meantime, I'll move approval of 1B16. Are there any questions? May I have a second then?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Item 1B16 is approved. Item 1B17 is a resolution to appoint Marling Sohn as Vice President of Enrollment Management and Student Affairs at New York City College of Technology. Dr. Marling Sohn has served as interim Vice President of Enrollment Management and Student Affairs at City Tech and performed well in, in that area and other areas. The President of the college, Dr. Russ Hotzler, is here to provide any further information, should you require it. In the meantime, I'll move approval of Item 1B17. May I have a second? Are there any questions on this item? If there are none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B17 is approved. Thank you. Item 1B18 is a resolution to appoint Alexis McKean as, McLean as Vice President of Student Affairs at LaGuardia Community College. Served as Dean of Students at Medgar Reviss College since 2018 and prior, served as Associate Director of Special Programs, leading the administration of the Percy Sutton Seek Program from September 2017 to July 2018. President of the college is Ken Adams is here to provide further background on this item, should you require it. In the meantime, I'll move approval of Item 1B18. Are there any questions or comments? If there are none, may I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B18 is approved. Item 1B19 is a resolution to approve the New York State Paid Parental Leave Program for Eligible Executive Compensation Plan and Classified Managerial Employees. As you already know, on January 10 of this year, Governor Hopel announced the New York State Paid Parental Leave Program and provides paid parental leave for unclassified and unrepresented New York State executive branch employees. The guidelines of the New York State Paid Parental Leave Program are outlined in the state's attendance and leave manual policy bulletin and the New York Office of State Control and State Agency Payroll Bulletin, number 2126. Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources, Dorian Gloria, is available to answer any questions, should you have any on this item. In the meantime, I will approve, I will move approval of Item 1B19. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments, Mr. Hannon?
What kind of benefits will be available for individuals while they're on paid parental leave? Will they keep all of their benefits, like health insurance and all of the other things that they have as employees of the university? Sorry about that. What kind of benefits will be available for individuals while they're on paid family leave for childbirth? Will they still be eligible for all of their benefits, such as health insurance?
Yeah, they would still be, this is not, doesn't take the place of any of the benefits.
Okay.
In addition to.
Okay.
Nor does this supplant any other. Okay.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. I'll move approval of policy item 1B19. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. 1B19 is approved. 1B20 is a resolution to appoint Rini Sarmiento as Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management at the City University of New York. We have discussed this function extensively as a committee and a board. She has served as interim Vice Chancellor for Enrollment Management and was appointed by the Board on March 21st. And in that capacity, closely coordinated enrollment activity, activities in a number of programs. Our university Provost, Wendy Hensel, is available to provide any further background on this, should you require it. Okay. In the meantime, I'll move approval of Item 1B20. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B20 is approved. Item 1B21 is a resolution to appoint Dorian K. Gloria as Senior Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources and Labor Relations at the university, City University of New York. As you know, human resources and labor resources are being merged under, under her purview. She has extensive experience with City University and other not-for-profit leadership positions. And Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista is available to provide further background or answer any questions on this item, should you have them. In the meantime, I'll move approval of Item 1B21. And may I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B21 is approved. 1B22 is a resolution to appoint Stephen A. Snyder as Associate Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources and Labor Relations at CUNY, City University of New York. He's been Assistant Vice Chancellor for University Human Resources at City University since April of 2022. Served in a variety of leadership positions in other states, in other cities, and comes to us with a wealth of experience. Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista is available to answer any questions, should you have them. In the meantime, I'll move approval of Item 1B22. And may I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B22 is approved. Item 1B23 is a resolution to approve program supplements for executive and global degree programs for Baruch College. On February 15th, February 5th, 2018, the Board approved 15 executive and global degree programs for Baruch College, including a schedule of program supplement changes. I have been advised, however, by General Counsel that Baruch College realized that after submitting the resolution for approval to the Board of Trustees, they did not include the most up-to-date fee schedule. And as such, that has to be discussed on its own merits. But that's me. So they did not include the, the up-to-date information. Accordingly, I'll move to table Item 1B23. May I have a second?
Yes.
Any discussion?
Yes, please.
Yes.
Well, is it, what's a supplement? I mean, it seems to me we have excellence fees, we have differential tuitions. And now, if we don't do the excellence fee, we can now add a supplement?
No. That's why we're tabling.
Okay, well, I mean, at least we ought to.
That's why we're tabling.
Yes, you're right.
Mr. Hannon?
Is this referring to the excellence fees modification at Baruch that we were, that we voted on last year at this committee for the MBA programs?
No, no relation.
Then what are we referring to here in terms of discrepancy?
All do ask for.
Executive Education.
These are executive.
Executive Education.
Education.
Without going in any detail, the Chair would permit me. There, there were several programs that are being expanded. And the numbers are not accurate in the original resolution, and they need to revise the old numbers. So this was a resolution that in part was approved in 2018. So substantively, nothing really is changing to the existing programs, except for at least one new program. But in light of that, I think it would be in the best interest of Baruch to table it for now and come back in the fall with a rather full-blown report to the Board.
And by the way, aspects of this resolution have to be perfected because there is no accompanying requirement to report how these fees are utilized, as we do when we ask for and approve other fees.
I remember that when we discussed the academic excellence fees last year, we tabled it for the same reason.
You remember well. So I move that we table. Second, Trustee Berger. There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Item 1B23 is tabled. With no more items on the policy calendar, there are two information items on the agenda. 2A, item, information item 2A is an update on the use of $40 million non-recurring strategic funds that was provided to the university fiscal 2023 in the state enacted budget. And interim Vice Chancellor and CFO Christina Chapo will make the presentation on this item.
Thank you. So I'll just go through this quickly. So.
So CUNY received $40 million as part of the 2003 state enacted budget. There are one-time strategic funds. We developed a plan which was in line with our strategic priorities that we had outlined during our strategic planning process. That plan was aborted by the Board of Trustees in October, so about seven months ago, and also, as required, certainly by the state of New York. So funds have and will continue to be funded centrally. I just want to mention that we're going to be doing the same thing on that $50 million that was in the budget allocation, so it all ties together. We plan on coming to the board at the next meeting of the new academic year with a plan on the $50 million that we'll also ask the board to approve. So I just wanted to, at this meeting, just give a little bit of an update. Since the fiscal year hasn't closed out yet, the plan is also, when we come back to talk about the $50 million, we'll also kind of recap in full really what we spent in fiscal '23. So the first column, the initial allocation, I know the slide's a little busy, really represents kind of the categories and the full $40 million that was approved by the board in October. I'll get to adjustments a little bit. Then there's revised allocation. The projected spending for fiscal '23 is in that next column, that $10.2 million. And we're -- the $29.8 million is something we're projected to spend in fiscal '24. As part of the state's executive budget this year, they re-appropriated that funds, so they allowed us to spend this money over two years. A lot of the procurements you've been seeing have been coming through this board, really connects with these $40 million, and that's why we expect a lot more spending to happen in the next fiscal year, including the $4.2 million that was just approved, those projects that Ned had spoke about. So when we went to the board, you know, we had a budget, and we made some estimates of what we thought some things run costs, the market and gap analysis, we've already implemented Phase One. That estimate has -- is much lower than we thought it was going to be. Even though we're doing a Phase Two, it's much lower, so we are reallocating some of the money to the online and also to some strategic initiatives, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So again, I'm just going to talk about a couple of projects just to give you kind of a sense of some things that we've been spending the money on, but it's not a complete report. And I have Wendy here and some other people if you have some additional questions about some of the things. So the first thing I just want to talk about is that marketing gap analysis. That's one of -- we did a Phase One of that, and right now, CUNY is using that data to inform really the academic program offerings, particularly the online programs, that we're going to really focus on at the colleges. There is a Phase Two to this, and we anticipate that. We're working on a procurement right now so that we really get more in-depth into those analyses, but that's kind of one of the projects. The second one is, and you see my telling, and this, again, is all kind of -- everything ties together. So marketing, advertising, there's kind of two years of phases of the projects, and it's both a university-wide phase and also a college focus. So we did a little bit of both. There's a Phase One and Two for each of those. So Phase One, this whole degrees without the debt, right, all of the subways, we saw that. There was both print and digital advertising there, and you could see some of the hits and some of the results from that phase. The plan is to do a Phase Two of that coming up in the fall, and also expanding that to Long Island, New Jersey, and Westchester Transit Systems to try to get a larger reach for the marketing of CUNY. And then also, we're helping out the colleges also in the Phase One and Two, the ones that struggled the most with enrollment. The enrollment and retention, Ned, you kind of stole my thunder a little bit about this. The $4.2 million that was just approved, these are some of the projects that Wendy had already spoke about. There's some more addition to that, but that was kind of highlight. That money, that $4.2 million will be spent in fiscal year '24. Another project, I have a little typo there, is really a redesign of our 27 associate applied science programs. That's happening right now at the seven community colleges and also at the three comprehensive colleges, Menger Evers, New York City Tech, and CSI, who offer both associate degree and bachelor degree programs. That's happening right now. And what's nice is we're also -- we've also been getting some funding on apprenticeships from the state through a different stream, and we're kind of tying that money together with this project. So as we redesign these programs, we're also putting like apprenticeships within those as well. So that's really nice that we're able to use kind of both these pots of money to kind of move those programs forward. Another thing that we spent some of this money on, and we spent about $750,000 on improving campus climate, so all the colleges receive funding. There's a huge list of all the projects that would have fit on like 10 slides, so I just want to try to -- I just pulled out a couple to show there's really a wide variety of different programs and initiatives that the colleges have been using with this campus climate money. Some of it will also be used here centrally. And then finally, I want to talk a little bit more about that other adjustment that we talked about. So in the initial plan, we had set aside $2 million for other strategic initiatives. We're now partnering that with another $1 million that we're not going to need on the market. And what we're planning to do is to give the five colleges, who really are the most financially challenged at this point, related to their enrollment, also their reserve balances, in order to give them some, like seed money in order to really focus on making some one-time investments that really are lasting investments in terms of either increasing their tuition or other revenue or controlling costs on an ongoing basis. So we're going to ask those colleges to develop plans and spend the money by June 30. So that was really some projects in a nutshell. So the plan is, again, to come back to the board at the next board meeting in October, kind of do a complete kind of dive, deep dive into like what we spent. We'll have a complete report with final numbers for '23, and also have a plan for the $50 million of new transformational money that we received from the state. I don't know if there are any questions?
Are we ready for second information item?
Perfect timing.
Don't miss a beat.
Yes, quick one.
Christina, it's on you.
Oh, so the second one is just we do this annual fiscal matters report that has some material fees and some local waivers from the campuses that they submit to us every month. So I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Any questions, comments? Hearing none, looks like we're done. So no items on the agenda, I'll move we adjourn. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If anybody opposes, they're getting hurt. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.